I'm going to call to order this special meeting of the Board of Education. It is Wednesday, July 20, 2022, and it is 6:02 PM. We have Mr. Claffey on the phone. Do we have a consensus that that's all right with everybody?
It's fine.
Yes. Okay. Seeing no objections. All right. Ms. Raymond, can you do the roll call, please?
Sure. So, these are on, right? I don't have to do anything.
Yeah, they're constantly on.
Okay. It's freaking me out. Ms. Darling?
Here.
Mr. Claffey?
Here and alone in my room.
Thank you, Mr. Claffey. Ms. Giglio?
Here.
I'm here. Ms. Lampier is here. Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Present.
And Ms. Bishop?
Here.
And we also have Dr. Andre.
Oh, thank you, Jess, for turning the recording on.
Oh, we should just repeat. It's 6:00. We called the order.
6:02, and everyone's here.
Everybody's here. And Mr. Claffey's on the phone.
Yep.
Heather, do you have -- can I have my name tag?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Did I just carry it back with me? I'm sorry.
I put your sheet there. You're half-prepared. So, tonight, we are reviewing the applicants who threw their namen for the seat, the open seat, on the Board of Education. And then, we're going to review -- I have a mock-up email that I wrote up to read to you guys, just to make sure that we're on the same page about sending out the same thing. So, I just want to make sure. I have already done this. So, my list of the people that we got emails from matches the one that was presented to us from Central Office. Can you all just take a minute and look and make sure that you have not had additional emails that didn't make it to Tara, or if there are names on the list that are missing?
Oh, I'll put this out, because we have.
There are additional names on here that I did not see earlier.
Some of them, I did -- I think some of them got blocked, because they sometimes come from other email addresses.
Okay.
But Tara received them and compiled the list. And we can read them out loud in a second.
Okay.
Yep. I've just had Post-it notes with people's names on them all over my desk at home. It looks like a crazy person's office.
Yeah, I made a --
Just lists of people.
I made my own, like, a special file in my email.
Yeah.
Pulled them all up at once.
Oh, I didn't do it.
So, it's pretty exciting to see the number of people.
Yeah, there was a great amount of interest.
Who emailed directly, because they were interested themselves, or emailed on behalf of somebody else.
Mm-hmm.
So...
Yep. Ms. Brown?
I just was doing a general search here through my email. Will any of the things that didn't go to the whole Board of -- the letters going to be compiled, so we can review them before next week?
Well, so, I thought all the letters went to everybody.
So, I just -- so, number three, I haven't -- I don't think I have anything from. Let me just -- I was just doing kind of a spot check from --
Yep. I don't have anything from that person either.
So, what we can do, once we verify the names, is we can have Tara print out the emails, and then put them in a packet for next week, when people come to speak.
Now, we should have that.
Yes, Ms. Johnson?
Okay. On my -- for some reason, my iPad, I don't know, it's -- I can't get into it, so I'll probably have to call tomorrow, find out what's wrong with it. I think we need to have everything prior to, and I'm hoping on Friday, I can get in my packet the printed email, so I can review it. I did not get -- number -- I see, I wrote up everybody we got emails from.
Mm-hmm.
And I counted out for that one person, and for the next one in line, how many we got. That's overwhelming, really.
Yep.
I think the consensus of every email was, it should be the next one.
So, I don't want to go into the discussion part of this, just because I want us to be able to have people come in and do their three- to five-minute speech, and us not kind of taint each other's point of view before they come in.
We would never taint anybody's view in this room here, not at all.
So, we can save all of the discussion about the candidates and the people who sent in information about the candidates for the one after, for the August 3 meeting, where we're going to come back and specifically vote on who has thrown their namen.
Okay.
So, if people want to come up with, like, your own, "This is why I'm going to vote for this person." If you feel the need to do that, we can do that on the August 3 meeting. So, Ms. -- sorry. Ms. Raymond had her hand up.
I just, before we started to really dive into the list, I wanted to make sure that the list gets read into the record, so that it goes into the minutes of the meeting, if that's acceptable to everybody.
I'm just letting everybody make sure, like, they didn't get any personal emails that didn't get sent off to Tara.
Right. So, I'll read these 24 names.
So, I see people still looking.
And then, if people don't have an email, we can identify which ones we don't have. Or we can ask Tara to send them all again. But it seems...
No, we can, like, put these in a packet.
Okay. So, the names that we have here, and Ms. Kinsella did them alphabetically, so they're not -- it's the only order that they're in. So, we have Shawanda Daniels, Roger Dusette, Susan Elberger, Caitlin Fahey Pearl, although there's a note next to that that says withdrew, 7/19, George Farrington, Kevin Flynn, Justine Gregonis, Steve Gertler, Alicia Houston, Rob Johnson, Anthony Lake, Lynn LeHaro, Joseph McIntyre, Harry Meehan, Dottie Oden, Colin Principay, Kirsten Prin, Suzanne Rack, Sean Rogers, Peter Thompson, Rosemary Torres, Peter Ulanio, Rhonda Vitaglione, and Colleen Ward Scott.
Does anybody have any additional names for this list that they've noted?
No.
Seeing none. Okay. So, we are all in agreement on the list of people who have expressed interest in filling our open board seat. The next thing that I did was, I created a generic email that I will send out to these 24 people tomorrow, on behalf of the -- I can't do anything on behalf of the -- as the -- on behalf of the Board without everybody's agreement. So, if we have no objection to this, this is going to be the email that I send out tomorrow. "Thank you for volunteering to fill the open seat on the Board of Education. This letter will serve as receipt of expressed interest, as well as an invitation to speak at our next special meeting. Please have a three- to five-minute speech prepared for our on-air public meeting, July 27, 2022, with appreciation. My information." Does that sound good? So, I didn't want to give any leading information. We want you to tell us who you are, what are your -- like, I want you to come here and tell me what you think is most important about you. And I don't want to guide that conversation. I really want it to be organic and left up to the individual candidate, because some people value different things above others, and I don't want to put my own subjectivity into it. Ms. Raymond?
So, I think we need a motion to authorize you to send that out.
I think we can do, if there's no objection.
No objection here.
No objection.
Okay.
No objection.
Great. Neil? Mr. Claffey?
Um, no, no objection. Are we going to talk more about the meeting itself later?
Sure. I mean, we can.
Hello?
Yeah. I mean, that was the -- yeah, hold on one second.
Can I go back to making sure we have all these emails? I just want to finish the list before we move on. Yeah, I asked everybody if they had any additional ones. So, we don't have any additional ones, but, like, for example, Ms. Elberger, I don't -- I didn't get an email from her.
Neither did I.
Neither did I. Okay. Are there any other names on here that people do not need the email from? Like, perhaps it went to admin and not to the Board? That -- because I don't want Tara to have to print out all of the emails, and then scan them back into one packet. That's a lot of busy work when they're down staff.
Ms. Brown?
So, I don't think I also got anything from Anthony Lake.
Me either.
But I also think that it's a kind of a cut-and-case situation, that she could send out electronically. I don't think that that would be a lot of busy work. I think it would be relatively quick, that we all had them compiled in the same location, I think would be valuable.
I also think they should go into the packet for next week, so they can be posted, and people can review the emails that were sent in. I know the -- to fill the open board seat, and we have Attorney Bolton here, if anybody has any questions, but he has told us several times now that how to fill the open seat is by Board majority vote. But still, in order for the public to know who's possibly coming onto the Board, I think they should have the same access to the information that we've received. So, I would, if that's okay, Dr. Andre, if Tara can make those part of the minutes, part of the packet for the next special meeting, so that they're accessible for --
Yes.
-- assumption.
We can make that happen.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm missing two other people that are on this list that I did not receive emails from. So, I think it would be helpful, unless you want me to send a list of who I did not receive emails from, to Tara.
No, I think we should all get them at the same time, in the same packet, and then...
Okay. Great. Thank you.
So, I'm just making a note here on the minutes that says, "Can we please have all the emails from all the applicants in a collated packet for the next meeting?" Is that acceptable to everybody?
Yeah.
I mean, she's listening to this anyways, but...
Right.
Yes.
Now, it's part of that.
We have a direct line to Central Office here, too.
You know, I like to have it written down on my thing.
I know.
I don't have any Post-its right now, otherwise, I'd just throw a Post-it in there.
Okay. So, we're all set with the email. We're all set with the list. Next week's meeting, we can call peop -- I say we just have people come in and sign up, like they would for public comment, instead of going alphabetically. We just have people come in and sign up. What do you guys think of that?
I think that's a good idea, because not everyone may show up.
Right.
So, you know, it would be nice if they all do, but in case they don't, we're not going to call someone who's not sitting here waiting to speak with us.
Right. Like, hearing this 24 names, people may say, "You know what? I was just going to be helpful," but blah, 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 blah. So...
Will we be considering people who don't come in to speak?
No.
Okay.
You have to come in, you have to do the three- to five-minute stump speech, essentially. And then, we're not going to make any motions next week. We're going to absorb the information that we received, both electronically and verbally. And then, we will come back on August 3. And we have to make the agenda say, on the agenda, to vote for the nomination. Right? Attorney Bolton?
Yep.
I would say if you just put election to fill vacancy.
Okay.
That's...
That would suffice.
That's for the 3rd?
Yes.
And what's the date next week?
The 27th.
27th. At 6?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Brown?
I'm sorry. And I think this is my mistake. I misheard you earlier. I thought it was going to be two to three minutes. If we go three to five, and everybody goes five minutes, and it's 24 people show up, we're talking about two hours, just for speeches.
Yep.
With no discussion, or no anything.
Yep.
So, was it -- do you really want it to be -- does five seem a little bit long?
So, the email that went out to everybody said three to five minutes. So, it is what it is. I mean, maybe a selling point of getting somebody on the Board knows how to keep it short and concise. Come prepared. Come with it written down, whatever you want to do. Okay. Mr. Claffey, is that what you wanted to discuss for next week? Mr. Claffey? You're on mute.
Yes. I heard. Could you repeat that question?
I just wanted to make sure that that was the information that you wanted to cover for next week.
Yeah, I guess my question was, next week, does there have to be time for public comment, given that it's -- that time would probably be available on the 3rd?
Right. So, next week, no public comment, and then, we're actually going to -- we have a Board meeting on the 27th, or what is it?
Yeah, that's what you just said.
The 25th.
The 20 -- no, that's our -- no, our full --
The 25th.
Our next -- our next full Board meeting.
It's the 25th.
Is the 25th. And, I mean, people can come and do second public comment then. But I think, I think on the 3rd, we can just do these -- I mean, the 27th, just do these candidates, and then, on the 3rd, people can send in emails to the Board with their support. I don't think they necessarily have to show up. If we have an overwhelming amount of people here on the 3rd to speak on behalf of whichever candidate they support, you know, we can make a motion at that point to add in public comment. But I think we're making this very open and transparent. So, public comment may be a little redundant, but we'll -- I think we can reassess in that meeting.
Okay.
Okay. So, that -- Ms. Raymond?
Hi. I have one more question. And I apologize, but it wasn't -- the recording wasn't good for that last week, so I wasn't able to, like, see all the discussion. So, I apologize if I'm repeating. One thing that I've noticed over the last week or so is that we filled HR, sort of, for Sandra's spot, but a lot of it has fallen on two people, and not the whole entire team. So, I'd like to put on our agenda revisiting that, once we have a new member, and whether or not the new member will fill Sandra's other positions on committees. Because we had an incident last night where...
Right.
Jen had to drop everything she was doing and come to do policy.
I did do, for me, a 14-minute mile, which was pretty impressive, to get back to the car.
Good job. But, and we've had a couple of circumstances where, like, I cut my vacation short, and then moved to doctor's appointment, in order to make sure there was a Board member for interviews. So, I think it would be good, at some point, to talk about having the new person pick up some of that committee work, for people who aren't as available.
Yeah.
I've got a question.
Ms. Johnson?
Was that for policy last night?
Mm-hmm.
But two makes a quorum.
It was just me.
Christina couldn't come.
Babysitter, text me at 5:04.
Oh, I got sick, and you babysit --
Yeah.
I don't want to say.
Oh, I screenshotted it, and I sent it to them, and I'm like, "I need a new babysitter right now." So, if anyone would like to apply for my babysitter, please email me.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was sorry about that, my last moment.
Yeah. It happens. People get sick, and that -- but having an extra person, right, to fill that, you know, that's why we have the alternate position.
That's right. I would think.
So, I had spoken to -- me and Neil had spoken about, since I'm going to take on a new role in Human Resources to fill Sandra's new seat, he was going to step up for Finance and Operations, and I was going to be the alternate. And we just didn't know if that had to be voted on, or anything, by the whole Board, or...
It does, but we can -- once the new person comes on, just to do everything at once, we can just do a reconfiguration of the committees at that point. That person may be, like, a superstar, like, HR person, and really want to be on that, so...
So, if I go to the Human Resources meeting next week, I'll, even though I'm not officially on the Board, I'll still have a vote? I mean, on the committee?
So, we voted on HR already.
Oh, okay. All right. Great. Thank you.
It's just, it's the flip-flopping of Finance.
All right.
That needs to be official, but at this point, it's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Because we didn't vote on any of her other committee work. It was just HR, right?
Yep.
Right. And I've got that covered for the next meeting. And even if Mr. Claffey can't make it, as long as Ms. Brown's there, we should be okay.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Okay. Any other discussion?
I have a question, or maybe two. So, after we hear everybody speak, we're not making any motions next week. But when we come back the week after, do we have any idea how that's going to -- are we all just going to come in and say, like, "Hey, this is the person that, like, I resonated with," and go that way? Or do we have any ideas?
So, I'm going to guide that conversation. We are a very opinionated bunch of people, so I will do my best at trying to see how fast we can get to a consensus, and then, maybe narrow it down. But it's going to have to be -- people are going to have to come in organized with, like, you know, what they would like, and their thoughts and views. And then, we're just -- I'm honestly going to have to think about it, and just come up with, like, what questions I'm going to use to guide the conversation, so that we're not -- my fear is that all of us have one person that we like.
That was what I was afraid of, and then, people arguing over it. But the -- I loved the way that you did when we were discussing the superintendents, and, like, narrowing that down. You did great there, so...
Do solution-based case work.
Yes. I loved it. I thought, I mean, it worked well for my learning style.
Yeah, that's my favorite. Thanks, too.
The other question I had was, what would be the starting date of the new member?
So, they need to get voted -- they need to go down to City Hall and get sworn in on, and it was in the letter. So, it has to be 60 days, has to be appointed 60 days. So, it would be, I think, by August 30th? Right? The 29th? It was in the -- it was in the letter. It was one of the last days of August.
Can't they be sworn in earlier, if we make a decision August 3rd?
They can.
Okay. Because I don't see the point in waiting. If we all come to an agreement on August 3rd, then that person can be all ready to come to our next meeting.
Attorney Bolton? Come on. You're -- you should just sit down here with us. You're part of the team. You're our anchor.
Can we make him a little sign?
The microphones are hot, like they are in the Aldermanic Chamber, so can't mutter. We'll hear it.
I'll plan on being here on August 3, and I will be prepared to swear in the person elected, assuming that you do elect someone that evening.
Okay. Perfect.
They can start right away.
We'll just throw a bunch of work at them that night. That's -- I would totally do that. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Giglio?
Yeah. I just, I know that you've already alluded to this, but I was kind of -- because we had all those technical problems at our meeting last week, they weren't able to hear what Mr. Bolton said, and what you said about the process by which we are compelled to make this decision.
The change in the city charter.
And we received numerous emails saying that we should go a different route, and that we should appoint someone from a previous election, and that is not our choice, and it's not our option.
Well, we can have Attorney Bolton explain to us what is in the city charter, in regards to how to fill the seat.
I think it would be helpful if everyone heard that, because they couldn't hear it last week, because our meeting was not televised.
The remaining members of the Board, the eight of you present, or in by remote, have to elect, and the word is elect, not appoint, have to elect someone within 60 days of the vacancy. So, if I'm correct in counting, that would be by the 29th of August. And you can do that by whatever method you choose. You can -- you can decide that the fairest way is to cast lots, draw cards, shoot dice.
I love all of those.
Person who finished last in the previous election, person who had the highest number of votes that finished out of the running in the last election, a person who has never run before, a person who has most often run before, people with prior experience on the Board of Education might be a consideration for some of you. You are not guided at all. Each of you have a vote. Takes five of you to elect someone. And so, as soon as the five of you agree, that's the person. And what you choose to take into consideration is entirely up to you.
Thank you. Any questions? Ms. Johnson?
Yeah, I just want to comment on that. So, when the charter change was made, we went from having an election, because everybody felt that that was too expensive, about $35,000, because nobody showed up to vote, to keeping it, rather than the next highest vote getter, to kind of keep it open-ended, that the Boards get to choose on how they're going to pick. Basically, anybody from the highest to the lowest, or whatever, in the last election, friends, your neighbors, or whatever, that you want to come in to basically fill the seat with five members. Vote to elect. Is that basically correct? Summarizes everything.
Well, I don't know that everyone thought it was too expensive. Some people may have thought it was too expensive. I don't know who might have thought that the person who finished out of the running with the highest number of votes in the last election would have been a good way to do it. That is not what the public voted to do.
Right.
And for whatever reason, people voted the way they voted, we don't know. But the Board of Aldermen proposed various amendments to the Charter. Similar things were done for the Board of Aldermen, Board of Public Works, Board of Fire Commissioners, and the Board of Education. Immediately prior, it had been special elections. About 10 years before that, the Charter had been changed to provide for special elections. Prior to that change, it was, similar to now, a vote by the remaining members of the Board in question. So, essentially, a few years ago, they reverted back to a prior system. As far as I know, never had it been the person receiving the highest number of votes in previous election was mandated by Charter. Now, it's quite possible, in some instances, that person was the person elected by the remaining members of whatever Board. But right now, the process, as stated in the Charter, is as I described. It's for the eight remaining members, by a majority vote of the entire membership, to elect someone. So, it will take five votes, and essentially, you keep voting until you've agreed on one person who gets the vote of at least five of you.
Thank you very much. Attorney?
Any other questions?
I do have one comment I want to kind of throw out there for everyone. One of the biggest things that I heard, I was trying to convince some of my neighbors to throw in their hat, and, you know, figured, "Why not?" And the biggest thing that I heard come back to me was, "What's the point? It's already been decided." Whether they thought it was decided based on the highest number of votes, or based on a party favorite, or something else, this clearly is not the case. I want to be very clear to everyone listening that that is not the case. No one has been individually promoted, as far as I know, in this Board. But it definitely worries me that people in the community feel that way. And I don't know if you guys have any ideas on ways that we can help mitigate that in the future, having been on the Board longer than me. Minus Reagan.
Well, I'm personally really excited to see how I vote. So, if they know how I'm voting, they can help me out. So...
I mean...
Facts.
I mean, I don't know what else we could do to get it out there, that we're seeking people. It was announced in a meeting. It's been on the website. Emails were sent out. People have posted it on various social medias.
It's not so much that they're not hearing about it, it's that they are just so convinced that this entire thing is rigged.
Well, I don't...
And I don't know how to make it not feel like that to people, other than trying to be as clear as we can in these meetings. But, like I said, I do not have a solution for this. This is something I wanted to throw out because it is something I heard multiple times in the last week. So, just so that it's on everyone else's radar, too. I know, it makes me sad. I want people to have faith in us.
My suggestion would be to tell them to read the city charter, because it says clearly in there how we're supposed to pick somebody.
It does, but the problem is we... So, for a lot of these individuals, they don't necessarily have the access to as much information as we have when it comes to whether a city charter is actually being followed and understood. I don't even know how to access the city charter personally. I'm assuming it would be online through Nashua's website? Okay. So, I would be able to find it if I needed it. But for a lot of them, it was just educating on, look, watch any one of, you know, the meetings here and make your own decisions. But that's kind of the problem, is the decisions aren't there helping. So...
I could point out, there are many things on the website that are difficult to find. The charter is not one of them. If one goes to www.nashuanh.gov, click on Government, there will be a dropdown menu, and one of the first things on there is Charter and Ordinance.
See, I literally have not even tried to look it up, because I wouldn't know what the point of the city charter was.
Charter shows up, and then you go to another page, and you have to hit Charter again, and there it is. You can search by word, so if you search for education and vacancy, you'll come right down to Section 75, which is the operable provision.
Google is very helpful, too.
I don't know how to change people's minds about how they, I think...
I think the more that we validate the fact that people have these feelings, and that we're listening, and we hear that they have them, and the more that we just try to be open and transparent and honest and all of that happy stuff, I think is... It's a long-term thing that needs to be worked on. But I do want to validate the fact that they have these feelings, and they don't necessarily trust us. And these are their kids. I want them to trust us.
Well, hopefully, when you have these conversations with people, you're able to express that to them. I think the only way that we're going to change people's minds is by, you know, educating that that's not what we do, and that's one of the things that we get to do. You know, when we have public conversations, like when you're in the grocery store and you run into somebody, and they say, what's the point? You can say, I'm really sorry you feel that way, and then just say exactly what you said. And people can choose to believe you or not.
I appreciate that.
Just before we end the meeting, I just want to publicly, I think as the board, we should do this, but I'll say it for myself, publicly thank all 24 people for taking the time to email us and put their names out there. There have been years where, you know, couldn't find enough people to run for the Board of Education, and so to see 24 people who want to give back to the community, because we have a need right now, is really encouraging. So, thank you to everybody who put their name in the hat, or nominated somebody else, or just thought, you know, shared their thoughts with us.
Okay. Anything else?
I think that's, she said it for all of us. I mean, I was overwhelmed when I saw how many people actually had expressed interest. I really was surprised. So, I think it's wonderful.
I had to silence my notifications for all the people that feel the need to email at 2 o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, I do that. Not tonight. Well, first off, it's not on the agenda, and second, we're just trying to clarify what's going to be happening in the next two meetings.
Well, I'm very interested in this, and I have, I have a question that pertains to the protocol and the process.
So, I need you to come up to the mic. Ken, does anybody want to make a motion to allow for public comment?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. We have to do roll call vote, because Neil's on the phone.
Hold on one second. I'm sorry, it was seconded by Ms. Johnson?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the motion is to allow for a public comment? Or for the lady to ask her question? Doesn't matter.
What?
Public comment?
Okay, Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
I mean, yes. Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Great.
Can you please come down here and state your name and address for the record? These mics are already on, so you just have to sit down and start talking.
I don't have to look for it.
No, not this time around.
Awesome. Okay, Sue Judicee, 8 Mahogany Drive, Nashua. I'm a former teacher in the district. I have probably watched every BOE meeting, every committee meeting, for the last 10 years. And it's my form of entertainment. That isn't meant to offend you, but it was my form of entertainment for a while. My question kind of goes to what Christina just alluded to, you guys. Are you going to be able to, now that you've got the list, are you going to be able to caucus with one another before, you know, you actually vote? Because what I have seen in meetings forever is that the vote is always split. It's 5-3, it's like, you know, so there's a group of you that vote one way all the time, and a group of you that vote another, and very rarely is there, you know, going from one side to another. So, I'm afraid, like people have been telling you, I'm afraid it's almost a done deal in this sense. If you caucus, and you start talking to one another, and if you said, and if Mr. Bolton said that you have to have five as a majority, I can see that happening.
So, it might be helpful for Mr. Bolton to remind everyone of what the right-to-know law says about us.
Yeah, so what is, what is the caucusing?
It's against the law.
Against the law, okay. All right.
If any five members meet outside of a meeting and discuss anything within the Board of Education's jurisdiction, it's against the law.
And that includes social media posts? So, if anybody puts anything on social media, and then more than three of us comment, it's now a public meeting.
Okay.
So, we have to refrain from that.
As I told you the last time I spoke, I'm the cynical one. And I'm cynical. That's what I'm going to say, because it may be illegal, but I believe it probably happens more than we know. Not just with you guys, but just in general. So, that was my real, that was my concern, too, because I watch the way you vote.
So, I think that this happens in all local governments. It just is. And I think that you'll find that on many boards and many circumstances, there are people who are like-minded, and there are people who are, you know, have a different idea.
But similar to the other ones.
But similar to the, you know what I mean? So, that happens. But I think if you actually look at the votes that the board has done on most of our business for the district...
It's usually unanimous.
Like, 90% of the time, we vote unanimously.
Yes, but when it's a split, it splits one way.
Right. I mean, we can probably guess on any topic that you gave us, how each of us would vote, having worked together for two and a half years.
But I've watched it, and I'm, you know, I'm like, certain things aren't going to happen because there never going to be the votes there.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, thank you for allowing me to speak. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you for speaking.
But I definitely think that's true. I mean, I think that, name a topic, and we can guess how each other, every person on this board will vote for it, on it, you know what I mean? Because you get to know each other after a while.
Right. I think that's one of the important things to do when you're electing people, is figuring out what their core values are, and if they match, then you're probably going to vote the same way. I am looking for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you, Ms. Gilio.
We have to do a by-roll call, because Mr. Claffey's on the phone. So, on the motion to adjourn, Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
I mean, yes. Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.